I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Fudge of Allegiance.
Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's a little shorter than a poem. I didn't know there were two of these here before. It's too short.
Yeah, happy you might have called.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yep.
Does that half map?
I suppose. We'll go with that.
Only the one that raised yesterday.
We forgot the one over there.
Forgot to raise that one yesterday.
Alright, we'll go ahead and start with the minutes from the last meeting. Is there any additions or changes to the minutes? Jason makes the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Nicole, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Presentation of the bills. Any questions on the bills? If not, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill and present it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Jason. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next is Casey sent you the financials for December. We just need a motion to accept that we have received them.
Make a motion to accept.
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, seconded by Paul. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have the delinquent bill list. Last few questions, do I have a motion to approve? The shut off.
I'll make the motion.
Jason makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Paul. Any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? Motion carries. We have commissioners' reports. We'll start with Paul tonight.
I don't have too much on the beautification side. I'll probably get on that. H E D C, just letting everybody know the 2025 Truck County Community Showcase is going on February 5th. If, I think they sent some invitations out to some people. And I guess I kind of was wondering, Casey, if you have got any information on that? Could we kind of, kind of get some stuff? She said she has a lot from what you did last year. So maybe I'll just have her get together with you. And she said she kept most of the stuff we did last year. I'm sure it's nothing much changed. So if that's okay with everybody, we'll just use that. The lead local class that was scheduled here last fall, that's been changed to February 4th, Tuesday. So if you haven't, if you'd like to still get on that lead local course, it still has openings. So the more, the merrier there. You can just contact me or else the Indian Extension Office at the courthouse. They're the ones that are coordinating it. So, and it is free. Everybody, anybody in Hillbilly that wants to go, it's free. H E D C is paying for all those. Anybody that wants to go. So if you want that extra education, it is free. On the electrical side, we could have, we are getting closer and closer to getting a plan together as far as what we're going to spend. But I would just throw out there right now that we're going to probably, for the whole complete project, could exceed over $20 million. So it's going, we're looking at four different phases right now. So there was, there was three and they've added another one at the last meeting for some things that they wanted to get done too. So that's just kind of FYI. It'll be coming down and there'll be more information on that as we go forward. So the only good thing on that is that will probably last 60 years. You know, so it's a lot of money, but it's, I don't even know the last time we've done anything major. I don't know if anybody could even come up with a date of when it was majorly done. So, but that, and nothing showed that it's more important now than these last couple of days. Because we're really, we're getting to the peak where we wouldn't want to go, we wouldn't want to go three or four days at 20, 30 below. So it's, it's getting used, we're getting a lot of, a lot of power usage. So, and what this will do is it upgrade, it makes it more. Right now we have two megawatt, five, two, five megawatt substations, if I'm correct. And when we read, when we update, we'll, we'll be, we're getting a lot more. We haven't decided if they're going with a 10, a 10 megawatt or what they're doing. Roy is still working on that. And so it'll be, so it's made, not only to update the system, to make it hold the load better, it's also for expansion. So there's a lot of stuff on that. There'll be a lot more information coming down on that, hopefully within the next few weeks here. So, and then also they'll be doing a rate study that's within a couple of weeks, hopefully. Maybe by the next meeting we might have something. If not, the second one on that side. So, so we're gaining ground on it and Roy is getting pretty restless. He's getting close to summer here, so he wants to have a plan in place. So hopefully that'll, hopefully we'll have some options for everybody on how that, how to handle that. But like I said, it, when I saw the printout of what our load was on Monday, Monday or Tuesday, it was, it was a lot. And then one other question, and I maybe can ask this when John gets up, is I was talking to Jay too about vehicles. That, what if you tag a vehicle on the street? How do they know, how does the city know if they're tagged? Do you guys know? Or do you guys have a system in place?
Well, we put the orange stickers on them.
So, so I guess when I was, because I had a-
And you do, like, yeah?
It'd be like on our daily blog that we keep track of them.
I guess what we were just talking, is there a way to get, do you have, so we know that we're active? Vehicle, we don't always do that.
Sure. Because the concern was, the reason I brought it up to Jay was, is because, okay, so let's say you tag a car.
Yep.
They, and the city doesn't know about it for two or three days. They're sitting there wondering, well, did a lot of good, moved my car, they didn't come through the snow anyway. So we were talking, he said they don't really have any real policy in place. So he was wondering maybe if you could give them a list or something of addresses of cars that are tagged? Is that why they can kind of keep an eye on those locations and see if those cars are moved or not?
Well, one time we talked about that you guys would let them know which ones are, need to be moved? Or you had issues?
No, this is ones that they've moved. They've tagged them, so the owners have moved them, so we need to clear the snow.
But they're not necessarily going to tell the sheriff's department that they moved it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so that they, so that they can now kind of randomly, okay, so they know that, like, one morning they could drive and see, okay, X, Y, Z car has moved. So now they can clear that snow as they're driving around or whatever, you know, so.
So are you saying you want to put for a level one, doesn't it help?
Well, I would say ones that you have issues with.
Sure.
Because then you know, once it's tagged, then you can check that it's happened. And if it hasn't been moved, then we can have it towed.
Wouldn't they tag them before? You wouldn't let them know what needs to be tagged, don't you, God, Matt?
We usually, depending on the storm and how much snow, we try to get to it within a couple of days, depending on the interstates. We're tugging stuff out of the interstate all night or, but we try to get to them as soon as possible. Really, right now, we really don't have a way that we log if they move it. More so if they don't, if they don't, after 40 hours, they can be told by us or by the city, whoever catches it.
And I think the way we were talking was more, you give them a list of what you got tagged, so they can go in a day or two. And then see if they've moved it.
Sure.
See.
Yeah.
Because if we don't know, because if we don't know that they've been tagged, he doesn't know.
There's been some people that have, they tagged them, they moved them.
Right.
We didn't see it was moved. It wouldn't be fair to them that they actually made the effort to move them and we didn't.
Right. Let me talk to Steven, see if we can come up with some, something we can do.
We just want to make it ranked enough that we make the effort.
Maybe it's weak and, and just thinking quick off the top of my head, maybe we can shoot you like an email or something after we get in.
That would be just, right, you might be just dropping a text.
Right. I'll, I'll talk to Steven, see if we can come up with-
How many years is it speaking?
It varies. This year's actually been pretty decent, but John, I don't know, I would say on a simple night, at least 12. So, but no, I, we should be able to come up with something, I would think.
And the reason I mentioned it to him is because over by my place, there was one that was tagged. Well, he'd moved it, would have been a couple of days. And I'm sure, I could just see a citizen saying, well, yeah, they tagged my car, move it, I move it, then they never moved the snow. So why did I even move my car?
Right.
That's just thinking, you know, so, because I feel that way. If I shoveled out my car and moved it, and then you guys didn't come and push the snow out for a week, I'd probably say, well, I might as well left it there for another week. Thank you. And that's all I have, thank you.
So Paul, on your, on that, upgrading our electrical, there's a grant round that's going to come out very soon. I don't know. He said it's going to be this spring, fall, or this winter, spring. They already had grant round one. It's anywhere from 200 to 500, if I remember right. And it's through the North Dakota Industrial Commission, it's the Transmission Authority. So, and that is for upgrading electrical transmission lines. In Lakota, they got money to bury their transmission lines. And then Valley City got some money and there's a couple of others. So that's coming up, but maybe being preemptive, so we're ready to go. Do you guys want to apply for that when it comes out, so we can get working on it?
Well, doesn't Missouri River all the time apply for a lot of stuff for us?
This is not one that Missouri River would apply for us.
Who would do that then?
Well, I'd look at it, there again, do, we can try to do it in, if Casey has time. Or we've been very successful asking Abby to help us with the A2S through grants. But it's up to you guys if you want to do that, so. But there's usually quick turnaround, so whether or not you want to do that or not is.
And what is ever going to happen, is it?
When I talked to him, he said it was sometime this spring, then it will win. But if that's something that you guys want, then we can.
No, I think, I think it's, it sounds like it's right exactly what we're looking for, because we're up, we're increasing it, so.
They don't have anything, they already took the application down and stuff, so I was hoping it would have been there, so we could see and get prepared, but. So, yeah. What does the commission think of, do you want us to pursue this or not?
I think we should, yeah. We're looking at updating and the reasons not to after.
Then are you-
I don't know how much information they need, if we have the information that they're going to need, that might be the only question.
I don't know, and that's part of it. Do you want us to look at working with the A2S to help write the grant?
I can't write, so.
I can't write if I don't ask. Like if I can read them, I can write. So whatever, whether you feel more comfortable, would you feel more comfortable with them doing it versus us?
Well, we've been successful with them.
Successful, is it, Tom?
Yeah.
Any idea what they, how that's, what cost that's been running for us?
The last time they wrote it, it was $2,000. We'd have to get a quote from them, that's why I'm asking, we have to get a quote to figure it out.
Need abortion?
Yes, because it's not in the budget.
I'll make a motion that we get a quote to apply for this transmission grant.
Is there a second?
Have the A2S do it.
Moved by Paul, seconded by Nicole. Is there any other discussion? Jason?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yeses for me? Motion carries. Okay. Anything else, Nicole?
No, that's all I got, thank you. Thanks for playing that.
And there is some other, like, there's USDA grants that we can use, again, kind of like we did with water and sewer, so we can spread this out over 30 years. I think the interest rate on those right now is 3% or 4%. So hopefully that may come down in the future, but that's still better than what the going rate is.
And this isn't something that's going to be done in one year, this is going to be done over five to 10 years.
John, anything to say?
Well, the, the, the whole, I guess, I talked to Bambi and he said, maybe Steve, Steve ordered, I told him to talk to me, Jason, but I feel like putting electrical on him. But maybe Steve can play forward in their office. And we have like one in that as well. Other than that, it's pretty much, Steve's been doing a good job keeping the streets clear of snow. And, you know, they've been working hard at doing that, so just want to thank them for doing the good work on that. Other than that, I don't have anything.
Cash flow more back?
Nope. There's still value remaining.
Probably won't be this year.
Won't be this year.
Okay. Anything else, John? Jason?
Just an update on the Tyler Tech. It sounds like they asked, they have some more questions, although they still haven't made a decision, but they haven't said no, so fingers crossed yet, as far as that goes. It sounds like maybe by the end of this month, they'll have a, they do meetings every so often that they discuss stuff, so maybe it'll advance. By the end of this month or shortly after. One thing on the cemetery, I'm throwing out there for the commission that considers with the, with the new spring raids and stuff like that, it's pretty much eaten a cemetery budget. So we don't have any money to do any of the lifting and making the lot stay decent. So I don't know if there's another avenue that we want to keep, keep working towards that. I don't know if there's another way to transfer money into that, to another account or anything to help out, but. Otherwise, we're just going to have to go without doing any of those, you know, some stuff that we've always done. Because, but we'll look forward as we're coming into spring and summer. Sheriff's Office, staffing wise, we have two of our three trainees are out on their own now, from the deputy side. There's still one that's in training. Both of the two new dispatches are getting close to going on their own, so hopefully here in the next, end of this month, end of, well later than, probably end of February, dispatch should be staffed up, so it'll be good. And then one last thing on the fire department. The fire department did reach out, they did reach an agreement with Sanford. So they will be moving forward with the plan of them being together with Sanford and the new building they're, they're planning. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Nicole?
Nothing to say.
So we, planning and zoning, they are moving forward on stuff. They're, been talking about some different things. They're looking at updating the the application, just so that there's a few more things on it when planning and zoning looks at it, not when it goes out to Midwest, but so that there's some other stuff. But they want it on there. They accepted the resignation, and so they, you'll see the ad in the paper and on the banner, or not, in the, the sign for planning and zoning, for extraterritorial zones, so it's anybody within that half mile. On beautification, same thing, they had asked for some more members, not necessarily official members, but just people to help with it. They've been trying to figure out how to do things. And as far as some of the things that, you know, what are some projects we need to do, work on to beautify the community a little bit more? Different lots or the city lots, we talked about street signs, we talked about the fence over at Railroad Park, they talked about the fence at the armory, cleaning up. Talked about a memorial at the courthouse with some flags. Some stuff in the works there. The one thing they asked, you know, how are we going to fund some of these things, so they were working on trying to figure out how to do that. I'm telling them about Ray Paul. I did finally get an answer from West Fargo Animal Hospital. They were more than willing to take the animals, but they don't have enough room at the current time. So Steve had said at one time he was going to line up with the mayors. We hadn't, hadn't heard anything, so I had sent out a message to all the mayors, asking if they wanted to meet last night. We had three mayors there, Casey from Galesburg. We had Carl from Mayville and myself. And so we talked about a lot of things, more than just dogs. We talked about a lot of, a lot of different issues. But they, he is, I sent him a copy of our ordinance for the dogs and he's going to look at it, try to make sure that. Carl thought that would be good, so that everybody was on the same page. I'm going to try to reach out to the rest of the mayors again and see if we can sit down and go from there. But they thought that, you know, if we wanted to house it here, that would be an option. You know, obviously it's got to go through all the rest of the counties and see where we hold it for 72 hours. They were fine with that, or Carl seemed interested in that. Casey can speak, you know, everybody's going to have to pay a little bit to make this work, so. The automated kennel cleaner that I looked at was seven grand about, so just, you know, it's probably going to be a $10,000 project is kind of what we anticipated to get up and going. But it would be, you know, what we talked about is, it's, they're held there for 72 hours. Once they're able to adopt out, if somebody's going to, you know, if they, they didn't get picked up, obviously they'd have to go over to the vet and get cleared, clearance, all of those things, if somebody's going to pick it. That was one thing that we talked about, was well, how are we going to make sure that the animals have the rabies shots and all that? Because they said they have some people that refuse to get their animals vaccinated, so. So there would be some requirements on that, you know? And ultimately, those fees would come back on whatever community if it didn't get paid for, so, where it came out of. That was kind of their thought anyways. So we'll keep working on that, and it was kind of last minute, but hopefully next time I can get a few more and then make sure Steve can be there as well, so.
Would you, how many, how big a kennel would you really need? Do you, do you have more than one or two at a time everywhere?
Those are streaks. You'll have none and then you'll have four in a day, you know, it's really hard to gauge.
Pick the worst one.
I've got a nice new wood here, it's been a lot better. I don't know if it's because it was cold in the winter or what, but it's really kind of leveled off. Not that I said that, I'm sure tomorrow will be a different story, but.
Nobody's out walking.
Close to drop in a little bit, that's for sure.
So I think right now is a, with it being the winter and stuff, I think it's a good time to kind of take our time and make sure we do it right, so that it works. I'm trying to get something in place for sure before springtime when it starts to pick up again.
And West Fargo said, you know, try to reach out to another vet that would be willing to do it, but there really isn't anybody that wants to do it.
And I do, I do know Steve also talked, I can't remember which one it is, the one that Fargo uses, he talked to a
The Fargo-
A community service officer that works down there as far as getting information and stuff, so.
And that's another option.
So that's why I say, I think the best thing we can do is, as Levi said, work on getting a meeting where everybody can get together and try to get something that works for most of the communities. And like you said, even other than dog, I think it would be so helpful if we can get a lot of the communities to agree on a lot of similar ordinances, so we don't have to remember 12 different things for 12 different communities. Might be easier.
And we learned, Carl, he said theirs aren't really updated either. I don't know about Galesburg, all your guys' are.
You know, we could use some updates, some amendments.
Some amendments and change.
Would it be, would you help, would it be beneficial to get, I know, I know of a couple of people that have shown interest in helping with that, if we did have that in town. Would it be worth getting a few of them people together and just having them talk on how something like that might look or might even work?
Oh, yeah. And, and you know, there's a group from, that the vet is working with too, that wants to put together like a trap neuter and release. I mean, so there's a lot more extensions to this than people that love animals that would like to see something done, you know?
Would be a good way to coordinate those people to get them together.
I would think the vet could, the vet has numbers of people, I think on Facebook. I, I mean, I think you see where, what people do, that community cares and, and that I think would be a good opportunity. But I think you have to kind of lay out a basic plan, so you don't have 40 ideas coming through here and, you know.
Kind of what we talked about last night was it would be, sheriff's department would notify via text or however that, hey, we just put a dog in that. And whoever's on call, you'd have to have a schedule, they're paid employees, so they're covered under insurance. Ultimately, probably have to give them a stipend to make sure that they're doing it, you know, whether they're on 50 bucks a week or whatever it is, that, you know, they got to go spend X amount of time while they're in there. But that would be, the only thing on the sheriff's department side would be just notifying that group that, hey, we placed a dog in there, they know that now we-
Where is there?
That has to be determined. Some of the ideas, I thought, well, if the sheriff's department has been looking at a building, so if we can get that building back that we had, would be one spot or-
Sheriff's Office has been looking at a building?
I thought you guys have been bidding out for buildings for a while.
They built a new highway shop building up in north of Mayville this last budget, but I haven't heard of any other buildings except for busy.
I thought there was in the paper.
At least not for the sheriff's office.
There was an advertisement for building. Paul, do you remember?
For the sheriff's office.
I think that was for the Historical Society.
I know Historical was building one, but maybe it was, been a while, but I know Steve at one time wanted a, a building.
Yeah, I found no discussion about any building.
So that's one spot that we talked about was over there. We talked about here would be another option, you know, we could reach out to Walden and see if maybe there would be a spot there, so it's all kind of housed together. If we had the infrastructure that we bought, but there's still a lot of details to work out, so.
It would be nice to have him at the meeting, who Walden.
Right.
You know, I mean, because they could even just take a room to put like five kennels or something in it. And so they would be safe and right there, you know?
Right. And it doesn't, the only reason that this one was more expensive that I looked at was it was a self-cleaning, so nobody has to worry about, you just basically hit a button. It sanitizes the whole system, so that each kennel's cleaned. We're not spending hours of our volunteer, our employees' times to try to get this cleaned up after the fact and making sure that it is sanitary in between, so. So we're not spreading any diseases. But we'll, I'll keep working on it. It was very hard just to get the three together, so I strong-armed one to make sure she was there, so.
I saw him on his knees. I saw him on his knees.
But there was a good discussion amongst all, and it's, we've had this before, Jim used to, had put it once here, but not everybody always shows up and so I got to be a little bit more forceful apparently to get them to show up or something, I don't know. All right, that is all I have for tonight. Anything from Public Works side besides what's on old business? Okay, JR, anything?
Nothing for me.
Casey?
Um, just two things, the audit is supposed to be finalized and over to us for 23 within this week or early next week, so we're super close. And then Renaissance Zone, I was looking through that last week and discovered that I'm responsible for sending out propaganda for Renaissance Zone. So with your guys' blessing, I wanted to make some pamphlets, something to make it easy for me to send out to businesses for your development plan. I'm supposed to be sending to residences in Renaissance Zone, businesses, realtors. And there's one other group, I can't quite remember, but
Builders.
Yeah, builders, that might have been it. Yep, it was four different groups, so. I'd like to have something quick and easy that they can reference and understand the program.
The one thing, if you guys want, we can look into it on the Renaissance Zone is right now it's a five-year plan, we can go up to seven. But we have to re-change that or we have to go through and amend it. But I don't want to do any work on it if you guys don't think there would be value of that. But that was changed at the state level a few years ago, so.
You don't have anything on the website at all? No, I thought we did it one time.
On your City of Hillsborough website? You do, yep, you do have it, but that's not outlined in your development plan. It doesn't say city auditor has to post on the website, it says city auditor needs to mail out items for Renaissance Zone.
So we could change that as well in the plan, but we have to change the plan. Last time, I believe the EDC was the one that put the plan together and the commission approved it, but we are able to change our development plan, it's just whether or not you guys think we should, and if we should, then we can work on it, but I don't, we're not going to put work into it if you guys don't think we should go up to seven years.
Right now I don't see a reason to go up to seven years, but I wouldn't mind changing and being that a lot of the people sit online or something, save the mailing, make the job a little easier.
I wouldn't mind that.
We'll dig into it.
Thank you. Those are the only things that I had.
I was thinking on the audit, should we mention that change?
Oh, for the transfer?
The ding.
Sure, yeah.
So Casey asked me and asked JR and we both were on the same opinion on it, but the auditors were questioning it, the $800,000 transfer, whether it was legitimate to our ordinances. JR says it is, they looked at it as debt retirement for the what we're supposed to use those sales tax funds, but it also says in there debt that would cause us to raise rates, which we would have raised rates or taxes on if we went to transferred the general fund, so. They were trying to get Casey to switch it, reverse the transfer and then we would have been stuck, but like we said, we, just so you're aware of it, it'll come up as a note on, on the audit. But, but we did the transfer legally, it's just they questioned it, so.
Yep, their definition of debt is different than what ours was, is what it came down to. Yep, they saw us more as deficient rather than having a debt to pay back, so, yep.
And they wanted to say it as, well, you have payments every year for a debt, which I said, well, we paid it out of the, the general fund, we have debt that we cover for the sheriff's department every year, so that should be covered, we're paying for services, so. And they then backed down, they just said they were going to note it in our report, so I just wanted to make sure you guys knew of that. Ready? Talked about sheriff's office, went on the engineer's side, don't think there's anything on the tickets, on the VC tickets. So the next item then is a recommendation from Public Works on their labor position.
Yeah, we have some positive interviews. I guess that we would like to recommend Adrian and who was his last name? I'm sorry, I had to bring my notebook.
That's okay, Angel Melandato.
Okay. We felt would be comfortable with in our department. And then we would like to recommend if you went with him, we felt that he could, well, he could bring each three departments. We'd like to recommend him getting $21 and then have a six-month probation with a 75 cent at that point. That's where we're most comfortable with right now.
Any questions for them? If not, is there a motion?
We look at moving that starting to 23.
It was discussed, it's not in the handbook. 17 is the minimum.
Starting at 17.
Mm-hmm, yep.
That's right.
I think we, I think we discussed that with, in the last meeting when we bumped, he gave him the credit for the bump bill, the credit for the bump up to where starting with V plus, years of service, we bumped him to 25. My memory is that we were going to start V plus 23.
And our handbook says 17?
It does.
Starting at 17?
No, exchange it though.
And it's just a starting, like this is where we're.
Right.
And you can make a motion to hear him at whichever price you want to start at, I mean, the commission decide.
Does he have experience in this?
He was in the military, I had someone like her, he was best speeded in the military. And then he has mechanical skills, he's worked some equipment. And then we really liked to have a mission to take some of the tests for the water. We kind of felt that was a good bill all the way around.
Which I think it's, I think it's a fair offer, sorry, Bill's been on for a year.
Well, a little over a year.
He's
It'd still be $2, if anyone went to 23, it'd still be $2 for them.
Yeah.
Which I think Phil would be okay with that.
And I think it wasn't that our discussion that we were going to bring him in higher because, because you guys were going to hopefully require certain water or you know, stuff that we used to give money towards for completing it, so now we're just going to start higher and not have that completion.
Yeah, and he was comfortable with that, he was well aware.
Is there a motion?
I'd make the motion to bring him on at $21.
Moved by Jason, is there a second?
Is that still with probation period? Is this set up, how is that?
Motion dies for like a second.
Do we, do we have in our policy a certain set amount together, do we remove that for probation?
For probation? Removed it.
Removed it so that they could have that time to see what that bump would look like based on his performance.
So then would you want to start at 21 and possibly come back later?
I'd, I'd be comfortable with the 21 to allow, you know, them to have that time for six months.
Is that a motion?
I'll make the motion to start him at $21 now.
With six months?
With the six, yeah.
Month reevaluation.
Cause it is six months, isn't it?
Six month reevaluation?
Yeah, and then
Okay.
You can bump them up according to evaluation.
Say, can you bump them up for probation performance?
I personally would like to see to start at 21 and then based on your guys' performance and feedback of what you'd recommend for a bump up. That's, that's what I would like to see.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, is there any other discussion on that? Any other discussion?
This a new one?
Yep.
So it is still 75 cents an hour raise after probation?
Yep.
But that doesn't mean you can't go more than that, it's just.
Still discussing?
Yep.
I, I, I'm kind of with Nicole, I think we start him at 21 and then if he goes gangbusters and the guys really like him and he's getting things done, there's no reason why we can't bump up to 23 at that point.
Okay, any other discussion? Nicole?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Next item is the raffle permit for the Hillsborough Baseball Club. Just need a motion to approve.
We do that every year, don't we? I remember that. I'll make the motion to approve, yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me? Uh, the new bill, tax exemption, I did talk to Jason Seeger on Sunday and it was a mistake on his application, he is living in there, so it's free to move forward. And that's $150,000 for the first two years.
And that's not all new bills, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's all. We'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Paul, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Next item is a liquor license special event or license transfer to the Armory for the fire department's fundraising event, just need a motion to approve that.
Make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, any other discussion? John?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. I thought we already did this one.
We forgot.
Yeah, that'd be good. I saw that and I read it in my mind, I swore we already voted on it.
Abby said we haven't, either Abby or Sarah said we haven't, so.
It didn't get done, but I wonder if the, I thought the motion was made.
Yeah, I thought that the motion was made.
Which one?
The To change your I bet because it was in the plant, it was in the reorganization plan, so it was all made in one motion.
Ooh, that might have, you know what? You're probably right, so based off of, you think the bank will take it with the reorganization plan?
Oh, is this the signing thing? Yeah, we did this, right? That was probably the week that
July, it was the first week of July.
Paul was in, when he moved over, it was done, whatever, meeting right after.
We just double-checked on the reorganization.
I see what a motion and do it again.
I mean, it doesn't matter.
We might have to if the bank won't take it.
I know my past experiences with the bank is they've been fairly particular about the motion in the meeting minutes, so.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, guys.
Moved by Jason, second by Nicole, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. I guess it doesn't specifically say that in there, but.
I think the eight D we did, but the eight E, I don't remember, so maybe that's where we're.
The Hillsborough LAE plant, that plan?
Yep, this was a request slash light requirement for the USDA program. We should have this on file over at City Hall. Basically what it is, is it's a plan, if we have an individual come to the office who isn't proficient in English. We have, this basically lays out the ways that we can work with customers who are hearing impaired, who are non-English speaking, and it's, it's just really basic. It, you know, basically use Google Translate and then have an interpreter available through the free service that, that is provided. So it's just a plan that basically lays that stuff out.
And isn't there some other things that we have to get done too that we didn't get?
For USDA?
Yeah.
There were a few things, yes, we have to, at some point, I was going to bring this up a little bit later, but at some point we have to get new bathroom signs that have braille on them. And they have to be positioned so high and on certain sides of the door. And then we also have to get handicap paint out here for the handicap accessibility. And then I think we got to lower the sign, we've got a small checklist, but there's free services through a couple of groups, ones in Grand Forks to come down and help us out with some of that stuff.
Well, and there was something with the door too that we had to change here.
Doesn't have to be automated open or what?
No, it was the threshold.
Probably too high?
Oh, like a roll-up?
Yes, yep.
Which I thought we approved that, it must never got done, that might have been about the time that Mike left. So we should make sure our Buildings and Grounds guy looks into that.
Try to get that done.
Thanks, John.
So do we need to accept this plan?
Yes, please.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motion.
Paul makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by John, any other discussion? Paul?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Any yes for me, motion carries. Anybody like to address the commission tonight? Reminder that our February 17th meeting is actually going to be on the 18th because we're closed for President's Day and then our next meeting is the 3rd at 6:30. And unless there's not any other items for the agenda, a motion to adjourn.
Make motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved by Nicole, second by Jason, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Meeting is adjourned.